I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming to the discussion meeting, the second meeting of the month of the board of trustees and the mayor for August 25th, 2021. Any recognitions or special announcements?
The 9/11 event will take place. Bajir Homestead on the 11th.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
So noted. Roll call?
Mayor Serino.
Present.
Trustee Sadadi, absent. Trustee Ponti, absent. Trustee Nesnet.
Here.
Trustee Huber.
Present.
Trustee Ruffin.
Yeah.
Trustee LaRocella.
Here.
Village Attorney Wallace.
Here.
In light of the fact that there are two absent board members, four votes are needed, five plus five to pass an item. Okay, so with that said, we seek approval to hire part-time police officer, Chris, Kristen Bahana.
Bahana.
Contingent upon approved background check and passing the required physical.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
At this time, Mayor, I'm going to administer the oath of office to Kristen.
If you want to take pictures.
Okay.
Ah, yeah. We're going to be right here. You can take a picture this way. We'll get Cindy. Sorry Cindy. Okay.
I'm going to read the oath and at the end you just say aye do and then you sign the book. State of New York, County of Dutchess, Village of Wapenjers Falls. I, Kristen Bahana, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of part-time police officer according to the best of your ability.
I do.
Sign. Right there. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
I have a pen.
Thank you.
Do you like that color?
Yes, my favorite actually.
And I have a seal, a pen. It's a seal of the Village of Wapenjers Falls.
Oh, thank you.
Again, welcome on board. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Did you get all of them? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day.
Tony, are you leaving?
I need to go back then.
Okay. Okay.
Next item is accept the resignation of Corey Yussevich, the grant writer affected 9/16/2021.
I'll make it. I'll second.
Any discussion, questions, whatever? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay? Mayor votes aye. Carry. Next item is Mayor appoint recreation commission. Then appoint seven members. I actually have nine, but two others didn't get back with me to absolutely confirm. So I'm appointing seven and there will be possible two at the next meeting. The names are Joan O'Brien, Healy Sheehan, John Telecheck, Beth Huber, Charlie Rizzo, Don McCormick, and Anne Marie Panaleo.
Need a motion to move on that?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
That was you?
No.
Aye.
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 Mayor votes aye. Carry. Discussion. Auto fleet repair consolidation.
The board asked me at the last meeting to go out to three separate repair shops with a list of the fleet autos and I did. And I sent out the results to all of you via an email. I don't know if you've had time to go over it or if you've had time to discuss it or if you don't want to move on at night. But you should have in your possession those three quotes. If not, I can get them to you tomorrow again.
Because they involve contracts, you may make a motion at the appropriate time to discuss that in executive session.
I don't have them either.
I don't have them, just so you know. Neither does trustee Nesnet.
I did get the email of them, but I have them in poor copy.
Oh, I have them in my briefcase, but I didn't make additional copies. You want to know what they are?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Oh, here we go. I got them in the email. Well, in the email.
As your request at the August 11th village board meeting, here are the following. Wapenjers Auto Tech, $55. They do all police cars at the, at the, as. RPH Main Street, they do building department, sometimes water department, $98. Al's Auto, Middle Bush Road, they do highway department, mostly trucks, pickup trucks, diesel vehicles. $122. Well, $123. Uh, because most of the fire chief's vehicles are still under warranty, they take them to Healy Chevrolet. Also attached to this list were the 24 vehicles that I had done review. I listed them all so they knew what kind of vehicles they were. And individually. RPH Auto Repair. As far as the labor rate for the village, we are currently at 109 labor rate, but they could do 98 for village vehicles if they got all 24. Wapenjers Auto Tech. They will do it for $55 per book time. They also provide pre-towing to the facility for all mechanical breakdowns, pre-jumpstarts and tire changes, pre-labor on oil changes and no charge for multi-point vehicle inspection courtesy transportation to any officer or village employee back to headquarters or village establishment when dropping off a vehicle. And again, it's $55 an hour. They do the majority of the work of the fleet right now. The other one is RPH. Did I say RPH?
Yes. Should be out for us.
Al's Auto. Al's Auto can offer a fair and honest vehicle repairs, $123 per hour. They go on to say they repair only what's needed. That's, that's nice. And so. That's the summary. A little bit right now is Wapenjers Auto Tech plus all the extra stuff they've been doing for us for as long as I've been here. Any other questions about the quotes?
Are we looking to vote on this tonight?
I think so. Unless the attorney thinks we need to do a contract.
Only I have a concern or maybe a question. Wapenjers Auto Tech seems to be doing majority of, or all the police cars. So if we have cars over there and we bring other stuff over to him and he does work for other people also, he's going to be swamped with all our stuff. I don't see why we can't keep what we have the way it is. Only because the highway garage deals with Al's Garage because it's diesel and the turnaround is quick. And these guys use their trucks every day.
Do we still have our own diesel mechanic we were using?
He does the heavy equipment. On the backhoes, the loaders, stuff like that. Machines down in the shop.
What's his rate?
$40 an hour.
Well, he's got no overhead.
Right.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not really for it. I, I think it's just, it's a great idea if we had our own mechanic that worked here. But to swamp one company with, would you say, John, there's 23 vehicles?
24.
24 vehicles?
And how many?
Does that include, sorry, does that include our fire vehicles that go to warranty?
Well, there's one fire chief I'm told that for some reason keeps going back to that dealer. The other two go to RPH.
And RPH was considerably also lower than Al's, right?
98.
Well, it's 109, but would be 98 if they get all the vehicles.
Right. Now, I know the water department and Brian uses RPH and they seem to like me.
And they're also in the village?
Yeah. I agree with, with trustee Huber about the possibility that we could overwhelm and then not really be able to get.
We need our patrol cars on the road as much as we need our highway equipment on the road also. You can't outweigh one and the other. I mean, both need it as is.
I just, I just don't like saying that someone can't handle something without, I mean, obviously they put the bid in.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, we're just, why did we even ask them if we didn't think we could, they could handle it?
The bid went out to bid? Or did we go to them?
We actually didn't go out to bid, but we put out the, you know, we went to get the quotes.
Well, it's worth a pointed question to just ask them, listen, do you think you'll be able to?
I mean, his shop is not the biggest shop.
Well, the whole, the whole purpose of this, I believe, is to have somewhat of a control over where the cars are going to and have somewhat of a control over the prices that we're paying. So that's a considerable difference right there. So I just, I just don't want to sit up there and just assume that they can't handle something without finding out that they can't handle something.
Well, what's the breakdown on the, on the breakdowns of the cars or the maintenance of the cars? Is anybody, do we know that?
I wouldn't have that history, but I think there's a, there's one of the officers that handles the fleet for the police department.
We're also in the process of getting two new cars and we're going to be eliminating some, then those cars are going to be under warranty and we'll be eliminating some of the, and if I'm speaking wrong, we're going to be eliminating some of the ones that were problems in the past.
Right.
So out of that fleet, the numbers that he's mentioning, two of them are going to be replaced by new cars that are going under warranty.
You're getting two new dump trucks down the highway. And you're getting rid of two old pickups.
And I'm assuming they would have some sort of warranty, Kevin? I don't know.
Yes. So you bought a dump truck a year or two ago that is possibly still under warranty and you're getting another one.
That fleet size, as far as having to go out and be serviced by an outside company that we choose is going to be smaller. Because also the zoning car, the planning zoning car is going to be replaced and that's also going to be under warranty. So when we say we have 22, 23, or 24 cars, whatever it was.
You really have 18.
We really have less than that because we're replacing those cars with cars that are going to be under warranty. I just wanted to mention it.
Well, I think it is highly unlikely just from a numbers point of view that you would have all 24 cars in the shop at, at one time.
Well, you could have a bad day.
Yeah, well, you could.
It's a pretty bad day.
You could have a bad day. I do recall the time at the fire department, two engines broke down at the same call at the same time. We had to call in mutual aid to help. So it happens.
Do you want to table this until you get a vehicle history for each vehicle?
Yes, please, if we could.
Motion to table by?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
So at the next meeting, I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to the managers this week. So at your next meeting in September, you want to have the vehicle history from each of the three, four departments?
Yeah, of the vehicles we have.
Okay.
And you'll probably find a few problem child so.
Problem.
And if we're getting a new vehicle, say the police, it should be noted which one is going to be retired, the car vehicle. When the new ones come in.
Now, are these guys diesel mechanics also? Do we know them?
I.
Do they deal with the new DEF system?
I didn't ask that technically. I didn't get into any of that with them. I just asked them for their hourly shop rate for the inventory that I gave them. Uh, the inventory that I gave them doesn't really say if it's gas or vehicle or gas or diesel.
So I'm sorry, what, do we have the, does he still work for us, the diesel mechanic?
Yes. But not, not all the time, I don't think.
Well, he does heavy equipment.
Yeah.
He does backhoes.
Right.
So he doesn't, so we don't have our own sustained diesel? Okay.
No, but when he comes to work, he charges that 40.
$40 an hour, I think it is.
$40 an hour.
Go home too. I think it's 40.
Let's have him do the fleet.
Yep. We should have our own person come in and do the fleet.
Oh, I agree. Nice place down in Boathouse.
Yep.
A water department, correct.
The next item, the board has been patiently waiting for candidates. Ran the ad four times, four weeks. I have two interested candidates that the personnel committee will probably want to look at.
Okay.
Uh, soon? Okay. So when did you want to do that?
If you could, did you email that to us?
Email?
Email them to me?
Okay. All right, I'll do that tomorrow.
There's only two, right?
Only two.
Okay.
Corey wanted to give you an update.
I ran update, Corey?
Oops, sorry, Nate don't want me to touch it. Um, so yeah, just a couple of quick updates. Um, I know the boathouse, it's been going on since I've been in high school. Um, feels like it's been forever, so we're trying to finish that up. Uh, I was out in and out of the doctors and hospital with some illnesses past couple of weeks. Um, John ended up contacting our architect, Mike Buffy, who sent us some documentation, um, electrical inspection and our, well, our fire that's now been set up. Um, some of it is what Brian needed. There's other stuff that I guess Brian said on top of that that I'm meeting with him tomorrow to further get. Uh, and then once I meet with Brian with that, I can bring it back to Mike Buffy and hopefully wrap up any inspection we need. Cause at this point, the lampposts have come there. They haven't been installed yet, but everything we've been waiting on is now there and ready to be installed and we're finally ready to officially close out. So, um, after my meeting with Brian tomorrow and then talking with our architect, we'll be able to finally tie that up.
The lampposts though aren't a part of the CEO though.
Well, no, but I'm just saying as far as everything we, you know, once that happens, our contractors are done. We're no longer doing any more physical work. So it's just the paper side of it. Um, and then on top of that, our EPA, so we're going for an extension. Um, we kind of got between COVID and then with John Zarowski over this winter and then his inevitable departure from KC. Uh, we got a little bit behind, um, on our EPA contract and our department, or our LWRP contract. I've spoke with both groups already and they're, they're going to accept an extension. We just have to actually do the extension process. So I started that today. Uh, as I told the mayor, they've, the EPA sent him some emails that he has to fill out as the authorized person. And then LWRP, I have a meeting on Tuesday with the Department of State to go through the process of extending those both for another year. Um, and then we can do our pilot projects this spring and our testing at the Bleatree this spring as well and wrap up those two big projects. And so, um, those are the three main things I wanted to bring up. And just, just, you know, those are probably our three longest running projects. And, uh, between finishing up the boathouse this year and then extending, uh, the LWRP and the EPA brownfield for another year is, uh, where we're going to be at. So. An answer? Any questions if you need about any of those?
It's, uh, not talk about the grant, but did you talk to Pete about the boxes?
Now, yeah, I gave him a text, but I didn't get a response from him yet. But, um, I'll, I'll try and give him another call tomorrow as well.
I mean, I don't think he wants to get rid of his office, but they're not in the way.
Sure.
But I think they can use the boathouse.
No, that makes sense.
And did you, and, uh, a while back when the boat was in the lake, the EPA boat?
Mm-hmm.
Did they ever get back to you about anything about that?
Yeah, so they, oh, yeah, I don't know if I talked about that. So they, it is part of, that the Lower Wapenjers Creek was a superfund site.
Yeah.
And so they were up there doing some testing on the water coming in.
Okay.
And we actually opened up dialogue with them um, about seeing if they would be willing to incorporate the lake as part of that superfund site.
Awesome.
And the guy said it's something he could look into, which would be absolutely outstanding if they would be able to do that. Um, so yeah, and I said, I mean, they're testing in there anyway. Uh, so we'll see what they say, but we've opened that option. See what happens.
Thanks, Cory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next section on the village board workshop meeting from KC Engineering, for the sake of brevity and saving money, we asked KC not to attend the meeting, but to send us her summary, her monthly summary, which I printed, is on the agenda. So the thought is that you would look through it and if you had any questions about it, you could call her directly. But I would like to draw your attention to page two, the alleyway, it's midway down half that page. As a stormwater coordinator and as the receiver of complaints, there's a runoff problem on reservoir. Back in February 2020, the board at the time authorized KC Engineering to do a study of the alleyway that's adjacent to 10 Market Street, the building that burned down, uh, February 26, 2020. They did, they started to do the study. They did the survey. The fire broke out. We told them to hold off, don't go any further with the project till we get back to you. So they did. And then about a month or two ago, I started to say, look, let's get the study going again because the merchants over there on East Main Street are complaining about water runoff and we really need to do something about those two catch basins. It was suggested that the village clean out the two basins, make sure they're connected to each other, take the second one, which is midway down, and connect it to the one in the street at Market Street and remove the stairs. That's the proposal. At the last boarding, board meeting, this board said to go out to bid for an engineering study. Well, you already have it. So I'm just saying before you go out and advertise for bids for another engineer to tell you what they think you should do there, I think that's, I personally think that's the solution. I've seen the drawings that KC put together. I think she emailed them to everyone. And that, that in my mind would be the solution. Remove the stairs that are a hazard to begin with and simply connect pipes from the top to the middle one to the street. Grade it and maybe think about a quick deed to get out of it completely. My suggestion.
I agree. It could be great. They are supposedly looking for a spot for their trash cans. That could be a potential spot. Meaning 10 Market Street.
Well, if I could just say, I was speaking to the building inspector yesterday and the issue is going to be if in any way the applicant expands his footprint completely out of compliance, he has to remain in the foundation that is there. And there's nothing, it's, it's not even open for discussion. He's got to stay within the confines of the existing.
Footprint.
Footprint and that will not. This was expressed to me by Brian Murphy. He watched our conversation in the last meeting when I was suggesting that perhaps, you know, if we want to give it to them, he's got to have a reason to want to use it. So, um.
Well, that's, that's later down the road.
Well, no, no. Hold on a minute.
Yeah. It, it would actually take a non-conforming property at the present moment. Okay? He would not be allowed to build, since the property's non-conforming, he would not be able to build what he had.
He's being grandfathered in because he's doing it within an 18-month window and it's, everything's being grandfathered in. The parking, the, the amount of bedrooms, the whole thing. So if he utilize, if we give him that property and he utilizes it to say have garbage like trustee Huber suggesting, which is a great idea, it completely change, it now makes him out of compliance. He will not be, get grandfathered in and it will not work.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
So I, I can explain it, but basically you would be giving the property or selling the property to him as an assemblage, which would take him, it would create a totally new property that would be subject to the present zoning and he could not build what he wants to build. So it would hurt him, his application.
If you gave him the property.
Exactly.
And if he utilized it. And if he utilized it.
And yeah.
Well, don't give it to him, so.
Well, you just said quick.
So what we.
Well, if you can't, then you can't.
Right, so that's what I was just saying.
But what I'm interested in is getting the water to flow down the Market Street. That's my objective.
Right. Well, I was just speaking about you just saying, give him the land and then Trusty Huber saying, have him use it for garbage. And I was just saying, that's an impossibility.
Right, right.
And I also, just to be clear, the reason why I said we should go to bid is because I don't have the confidence in that water runoff study.
So instead of taking what they've already given us, go out to bid for another engineer to come in and tell us?
Well, no, I'm just saying that my position is, based on a lot, a series of issues, a series of complaints, a series of situations that we find ourselves in right now, where we're trying to rectify work that was already done. Many programs and things that we're all well aware of.
Do you want me to, do you want me to type up a bid, request a bid?
There's already, there's already work product from prior.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just, he said he supports it. I'm just letting you know I don't, that's all.
Who would do the work? Would our highway department do that work?
That's a good question.
If our highway department's going to do that work, can we just have the highway department go over in detail what has already been done?
You gotta be careful with this. Because the steps are attached to the foundation and you just can't go in there and start scooping it out.
Exactly.
You might damage the foundation. You gotta have somebody with some technical knowledge to be there. If it's not KC, that's fine, but somebody's got to be there that's a structural engineer. That's what you need. That's why I'm saying, do you want to go out to bid to get a structural engineer?
That's what I would do. That's what we talked about last time. I mean, we already went through that.
Right.
But then you've uncovered this since our last meeting, that there is this information.
Yes.
And I'm just saying, we're still concerned about manhole covers. So that's my opinion. It's, it's my, my position on the engineering is not going to change, so. It doesn't mean that I'm, I have the right position, it's just my position. So if every, if the board thinks we continue on this, that's fine. I can still have a no vote, but if you got all the votes to her to be yes, then it's a yes.
I think you already voted last, the last meeting, you want to go out to bid for a structural engineer.
No, but I'm saying, in light of that, he's now surfaced this new plan. So if you guys want to change and go with that plan, that's fine. But this is not just take a pipe, connect the pipe and connect another pipe as just outlined by Clerk Carge. This is all found, you know, work that's connected in rock and concrete that is connected to this applicant's foundation and other things and it might be a bigger plan.
John, do you think it would be helpful if we had our, the study that we paid for, if they came before the board to at least explain and recommend a course of action?
KC is available to provide more detail upon request and reactivation of the previously authorized project. Work beyond the previously established budget would require a proposal update and village board authorization.
So they're, they're basically saying that they, they have a recommendation and you're, I think that they should come before the board to explain what would need to be done. And they aren't doing the work. We have to make a determination as to the scope of the work, who'd be doing it. So if it can be done internally, that's one thing, but if it can't be, ask to go out to bid and we'd have to follow our procedures.
Well, I'm being called by property owners and I don't know what to tell them.
We've already had a motion to go out to bid for it, correct?
Yep.
Then let's just go out to bid.
Are you preparing a bid package?
Go out to bid for, for?
For engineers to do a study? Did you, didn't you say at the last meeting that you would?
As long as it's specified, we're going out to bid for it. I can do whatever you want, but I, I don't even know how to word it unless she put it together for me.
Well, it's apparent that the steps are part of the foundation. It's apparent that KC has done the study for this project.
In 2020.
There's remedial work that needs to be done as a result of the study. And the scope of the work, I guess, would have to be, I, I'll take a look at it and talk to her, but that is what you would be getting out the bid. Is that what we're doing?
Sounds like that's what they want to do.
I don't know. It'd be up to the pleasure of the board to make that determination at this point. Or do you want to just table this so that we can find out if our highway department or that we can, is capable of performing that work?
Well, but if we have to go underneath the steps and the steps are attached to the building, I don't think the village highway department, nor does the village want to be responsible for the foundation.
Exactly.
There?
I agree.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm not speaking for Pete, but I think Pete might be on the same terms as that.
I don't even know if we could.
Village property.
Village property, but the stairs are attached to his buil, another building.
I mean, but there's no building on top of the foundation right now.
No, but if he's using the foundation, the old foundation for the new building and we do damage to it, then I think.
I mean, how mu, how much damage could we do if someone took the, they saw cut the stairs even six inches on the outside of the foundation?
We don't, we don't know how our luck is.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, how much damage can you do with, with a diamond tipped saw blade and just cut the concrete?
I could talk, I could talk.
And take all the stairs out.
I could talk to Pete about it and get back to the board.
You know, but I, one way or the other, part of, of this bid that we're looking to do, if we have someone else do it, is redundant work because we've already done it. And they've done it, KC has done it.
No, they did the engineering. We'd have to hire a contractor to actually implement the specifications for the cleanout. Or make a determination if cleanout is even feasible.
Let, let's assume that we're going to use KC Engineering's plan. We hire a contractor. How do we just protect ourselves in case we, there is damage to the foundation? And we have insurance, would it cover us for something like this?
Wouldn't a contractor?
Our subcontractor would have insurance? As, as long as that's doable, I mean, I'm in to get this project done as soon as possible. Just get it done before that building is built. We don't need any other trip and falls. John's getting complaints.
Right.
We can take care of this. Just, let's make sure as a village, we're properly protected, that's all.
Yep, okay.
So we're going to table it then until September and do some other work in between relative to this issue?
The other alternative is to have our village clerk circulate to have to bid based on the specifications of the KC.
So right now, what the question is, is whether we're going to do it ourselves or have somebody else do it? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's one of the options.
Yeah, essentially.
And I just, I just want to just say to the board, you just have to make sure that you have confidence that the study and the suggestion is, is one to go with. That, that, that was my biggest thing. You could be, there's different ways to skin a cat, so. You just want to make sure that that's the way to do it. That's, that's all. I don't, I'm somebody who agrees when something's significant problem and it's weighed on the village for years and all kinds of people have been injured or lawsuits have been brought. You want to make sure that it's done and it's done correctly the first time. And we haven't had a recent thing where we don't have, they don't have that track record lately. And so I don't know what else I have to say about that. But if you think that that seems reasonable, then go for it. But it's not just about, it's not about, well, we have the plan. It's, do you have confidence that that plan is a sound one? That's what I'm asking the board right now. And if the answer is yes, based on the other situations, and Mike, you're aware of some of them, if you're like, yes, I have confidence, then good. Have confidence and stand on, you know, two feet about it, but I don't have that confidence.
Maybe about 75%.
You gotta check your gut and maybe that's good, but we've done work and redone work and redone work.
I make a motion, we go out to bid for an engineer to look at this project, to do this project, to see what we got to do.
Well, I can put an ad in the paper, easy enough. But I'm not an engineer and I can't stand there with a engineering company and say, oh, what do you think we ought to do here about this water runoff problem?
Yeah, I think you have an engineer that certified the work and hasn't, errors and omissions, you know, a professional liability clause.
Isn't that a problem?
No, I think that, you know, you're gonna, we asked them to do the work. We agreed to pay them to do the work, the other board did, and they, they did the work. You guys got to make a decision if it's financially cost-conscious and feasible to go with that. If you're saying that, you know, you don't want to do that because it's a leap of faith that you don't want to take, that's one thing. But the design itself is covered.
Oh, is covered, I'm sorry.
Is covered under their ENO, of course.
I see, I thought you said it was.
So I, I.
How long is the work, how long is it guaranteed for?
Well, the not practiced statute of limitations is three years.
What about in the circus, and that's, that's the only, there's no other shorter timeframes? Like with some of the other things where we're told, well?
No, it's a professional.
Hmm?
Not as a professional like that.
But I'm saying where we had the situation with manholes, that it was 14 months or how long was it? That they started to fail? Is anyone?
About 18 months.
18 months and we were told you were outside the one year. So why was there one year on that? Will there be one year on this? These are things that if we're going to lob, you know, advocate for the residents and the building owners and the business owners, we got to really make sure that if we're giving it.
I think, I think you're talking about two different things.
How though?
Because that work was done by a contractor. It went out to bid and the contractor's warranty, I believe, was for one year. That's what you're asking. This had work is, is.
Has it been inspected? Was it inspected correctly?
It's, it's at the engineering stage right now. If it's determined that it was a faulty engineer, engineering plan, that's what the three years is about.
All right, well, I don't want to get bogged down in, in the minutia. I've said what I think and that's what I think.
Well, the situation you have with this particular project is about 75% into the project. They've already made some recommendations. You want to check with the highway department, see if they can do it. I can save you that stuff right now. The answer is no.
Mm-hmm.
So you want KC to finish or you want to terminate them down, go back to square one?
Just on the point you just made is they don't have the equipment to do that.
That's what I'm told.
Oh, okay.
So your decision is, do you want to finish this project where KC or do you want it where it is and go back to the beginning, get another engineer to come in and? But you do have the sur, part of the survey. They didn't complete the entire survey.
How much has been spent to date, do you know?
I don't know.
Go back to the beginning with a new engineer.
Yeah, and she says she also wants to go over the budget again too.
I make a motion, we go out and get another engineer for this project.
Entire project.
Entire project.
I'm not technical enough to write that kind of a bid.
Well, we have two lawyers here, they can sure they can help us out, they're paying good money.
This calls for a technical interpretation.
Can we bring in a consultant?
They don't have enough work product, it sounds like.
Can we bring in a consultant to check? And can we just bring in a consultant to check the work that's been?
Second opinion, I think.
A second opinion?
Yeah.
Why don't we just do that?
That sounds like a great idea.
Bring in a consultant, have them look over what's currently been done, assess the situation and advise us from there.
That's a great idea. Because the challenge is none of us really have the technical ability though to, to see it and see if it's right or not, so.
Well, that's true. And it's not good when you have a few board members who, for whatever reason, maybe by past practice and seeing what issues they've been left with, things to hold that projects, yeah, they may have got completed, but they didn't get completed.
You had to go back to fix them.
And you had callbacks. So that enters into the mind of some of the board members.
Can I just remind the board though, that if you go back to square one, you're actually going to prejudice the adjoining landowner who has 18 months to get his, his project complete. And this is really going to affect his ability and he could, his non-conforming use could, he could argue that we're responsible for him losing his non-conforming use. So I just think that maybe we should talk about this.
Yeah, but if he don't touch the wall, if he don't touch the stairs or anything, he can still build. We're not stopping him from building.
But it's a, this particular project is actually part of the overall site plan. That's why it's delicate right now.
And you wouldn't be able to float his timeline or extend it based on the fact that we have to do our job to allow him to do his job?
Arguably, we already have.
Okay.
So that, that is.
We find ourselves in these predicaments a lot.
This is a, I, I think that we should, you know.
What if you bring Nancy in to the next board meeting and have her tell us exactly where they are with this project?
I think that that would probably be best. And I think also that the, if the board wants to get a second opinion, you can ask for that now based on the work product that she has. And, and John can, can reach out to, you know, to another engineer.
Okay. So, planning board has given the owner 18 months to complete the project, correct?
From the date of the, yeah, yep.
From, from the day of when he got the go-ahead to go? Is that how the timeline works?
The day of the fire.
I think it was the day of the fire.
Yeah, he's made an application a good date and it's pending, you know, the determination.
Well, the fire was over, how long ago was it?
Two years.
So he has to start doing work within 18 months. It doesn't have to be completed, right?
I don't know.
Well, surely he has to start it because he's not going to complete that, this project.
Well, right, but he hasn't, he hasn't laid a piece of brick, so I think that's what has to happen. It has to be.
I think, I think next month is 18.
Well, there, there was.
Might be there in there.
Maybe today. It might be today, this wasn't in February.
It was February 26th.
So that would make it 18 months ago. Tomorrow.
I mean, he can get around that.
He made an application, he's got a good big application going, so.
I mean, I think the planning board could, you know, stop the clock so to speak a little bit here on this item, because of this item. And he wants, he wants to do the work and we're holding him up.
I can get an answer from the board about that, if there is an issue, but.
So let's clean this up. Is, is the board in agreement that John can search around for another engineer to take a look at what has been done already? Is that what we're looking for?
That's what I'm, yes.
Is that what you're looking for, Adam?
Yes, sir.
Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Jed?
Yeah.
Fine. So that's what you do, John?
Get a new engineer to do the project.
No. To review and analyze the existing work the KC engineer submitted.
To sit down with KC and go over what they've already done.
Yeah, or the plans, I don't know if they're going to meet with KC or not. But go over the plans, yes, this is good, no, this is a problem.
Plans, what plans?
The ones KC's. The ones Casey's put together.
Didn't they put together some kind of thing aren't we talking about that they came up with a study?
I can tell you I don't John usually professionals don't give up their work product so.
Okay.
So the the.
I thought we had. We don't get it?
She gave me a sketch.
Okay.
Well, that's fine.
They sent a sketch.
Okay, well then I'm back to.
Well, we'll ask someone it is to. Take a visit to the site. Do a walkthrough give us. The best way to remedy this situation.
What did I just said? Yeah, it it's there's only a sketch here and Casey is available to to do more work. But they would have to be authorized by this board at this particular moment in time.
Okay, so then it sounds like we're not particularly deep into this like we just thought we were.
Yeah, I think it's.
We're in a quick.
How much is stamped I think I think the survey was about ten thousand. That was a high number I remember that.
Was is the survey work done?
Not totally she's saying. I thought she said way back oh geez John we already did the survey so you gotta pay the bill. When I asked her about it. A month ago she said well you know it wasn't totally done I said I didn't know that.
So these are the.
Right.
Things that we continually find as we scratch and dig.
So. But uh we got the board here is prepared.
I know what engineering group I want to read.
Oh, I'm ready. Fine. And they want. A look at the site.
I'll show them the sketch I'll show them the work that needs to be done I'll walk the site with them.
Fine, that's what you do and let's see if he or she can come up. With a doable project.
So I will get a price for your meeting in September and tell you how much that engineer wants. To charge for that work effort. Right?
Yeah, I guess I guess that's.
We have no choice we're 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 we cannot go forward on something that we don't even have. Being told that we have it when we don't.
Because it involves professional services we do not go through.
Okay, alright, I got it I know who I'm gonna call tomorrow.
Okay. And I think if you were to bet me twenty bucks I'd see I can guess the name.
I think I know it too.
I'm sorry board but I have to leave in fifteen minutes.
Okay, so so. The clerk passed the handout of all the committees so I guess if anyone has a bad memory.
Yes, I actually have to do that because.
Uh cause evidently some people have forgotten what committees they're on.
I would just like to go over the meeting schedule to make sure I have it correct finance first Wednesday nine AM Village Hall. Is that okay?
Yes.
Personnel as needed. Trim Muni first Thursday. Of the month. Mayor?
Yes, unless it's uh. Too close for them to process bills on some months.
It might be an exception.
Right, there might be an exception.
Lake third Monday six PM.
Correct.
Water Monday prior to the second Wednesday six PM.
Correct. No, three PM. The three PM's are.
Three PM, okay I'll make that correction recreation third Monday seven PM.
Correct.
Legion Hall legislation. Uh fourth Wednesday four thirty PM.
As needed.
As needed, okay. Police last Wednesday eight thirty in the morning.
Yes.
Last Wednesday eight thirty?
Yeah, this morning.
Sorry I missed you.
Public Works Monday prior to the village board meeting.
Correct.
Fire as needed.
Yeah.
And that's it, okay.
Do you have any type of schedule for the Legion Hall by any chance?
Yes, it's online Heather.
It is online?
Heather keeps it.
Cause we sometimes run into people or groups.
You shouldn't.
Yeah, we have.
If you do, call me or let me know.
I will.
Alright, um the other thing I was asked to give you. Are the rules. For public meetings and I printed them all out. There was a uh resolution dated four twenty-nine twenty twenty. It was voted on by the board at the time. And passed.
So. Read that over. Let's see how good we can come to implementing it on the next meeting. That's good John. You did that, okay. So. We have. Anything else to add Cindy you got something?
Well, yeah, I just wanna go back to.
By the new rules you're supposed to come to the microphone state your name and address. And uh. You have.
Three minutes.
Short time.
Three minutes, oh.
Hundred eighty seconds.
Okay, Cynthia Latino fourteen Adams Street Wapentersville. Uh I'm just going back to the report that Nancy submitted uh for the Bain Park survey and master plan. I got a more detailed letter that she sent to you um she needs direction to move ahead on it. We need to go out to bid for the installation of that playground and um that's out of the scope of the work that um. Uh she was doing so um it's something we didn't anticipate doing I think you're aware of the fact that. Um the county came back to us and said we could not piggyback off the bid that we uh that La Grange had gotten for Compan to do. Playground equipment and installation for them um. They had not said a thing to us about it I mean over the past two years until the end of July. So we do have to go out to bid um you know our plan had been to have Compan do the installation uh we need to go out to bid. On it instead of just giving them the bid we have to go out to bid on it so she needs to put together a bid package um. So she needs some direction as to what the scope of the project will be uh in terms of are we gonna do parking and. Uh so what we ended up doing was contacting the county um asking the county what could we? They uh said we couldn't use certain amount of the grant fund on certain parts of the project. But we could use it on others we could defer to other stuff so it means shifting around how we're we're doing things so. Uh but that's gonna have to go out to bid some of it can be done in-house but the installation of the playground itself has to go out to bid. She needs direction to create that bid package.
Do we know how much approximately that's gonna be?
I think it's ten thousand is that is that that part of it?
Bid package together?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh which I want to talk to her about just cause it seems.
It seemed tight to us and I you know um one of the alternatives that we had looked at doing was uh the county does have. Um somebody that could put together a bid package for us however she'd have to give them all the information anyway so. I don't know that we would save any money in the process.
Do we have a clue as to how much it might be to install it? Do you know like from another park approximately what we might be looking at?
Well, yeah, we have the we had the money and the grant to cover.
I know but do you know about how much it's gonna cost to install it approximately?
Uh I am subtracting.
Originally with.
It's about sixty thousand but I but uh we did make some adjustments uh because of Pete. Feeling he couldn't do some of the work that we thought that they would be doing um he didn't feel he had the equipment to do it so. Uh Compan would have the equipment necessary to do the prep work which is leveling out that parcel compacting um. Material we need to get from Tilcon which we got donated.
We can't level out dirt?
He doesn't have the he doesn't have bulldozers and stuff like that to to level it out to compact it down and. Do it I I'm just telling you what I I've been told so because Compan would have the equipment on site anyway to be doing an installation. That's what we're looking at we we changed the scope of the work that needed to be done. But that would all have to be written up into a bid package now that would need to go out to um I think we have to advertise it for a week. Uh we need to have the uh bid out there for two weeks uh for people to respond to and then we could open it. I'm really pushing I really would love to get this playground equipment in this fall.
And I maybe I'm wrong but is it the installation isn't covered by the grant we can't use grant money for the installation?
We can use grant money for the installation we cannot use grant money for buying the equipment.
Okay, so installation is grant money.
Installation is grant money. So we have two hundred thousand dollars of grant money that we can use for the installation. And what we had discussed using it for.
None of that's been used yet none of that two hundred thousand's been used yet from those two grants?
Thousand has been used yet except.
The one hundred.
Right.
And then you had the original one hundred.
Right. So none of it has been used yet except if we want to there are some things that I think the highway department has already done on the property. That we could apply for reimbursement for. But. What I'm looking for is the installation would be is covered but we have to go out to bid on.
So then all the all the equipment came out of the recreation fund?
Yes. So that was we already paid ten thousand the balance of it was forty-eight uh five. So total amount was like fifty-eight on the equipment.
And we have enough in the recreational.
We had.
Beans to cover the balance. For the equipment.
But she's again she's looking for direction in terms of our creating a bid package and again I I think it's you know. It's a wash if we go to the county and ask um the county you know person that writes their bids up to create the bid for us. She's gonna have to supply the information to them anyway as to what's what would be required to for the what we need to be doing on the site and stuff. So I I don't know but so we need to talk to her cause I I wasn't sure about the ten thousand I don't know if she was giving us a ballpark figure. Or if that was cause I just got the email this morning so which was sent yesterday we just got it.
Well, here's the thing whatever we pay. Now soft costs aren't gonna be uh. Chargeable to the grant. Which would be Nancy's fee which would be Casey's fee. So soft costs aren't so why don't we ask? For her to give a reasonable estimate of. This park to get the basics in the equipment and what and whatever and some of the paving on the walkway or whatever.
That's what she's looking for she want she wants some direction from you guys as to how much of this project you want to do. So what what's what's necessity?
Answer that if you don't have have a bottom line price of what the the project is gonna cost.
But before she moves ahead on stuff I think she you know um the design work is covered. It's the bid package that she puts out it isn't so we you know I can go to her and say okay we can move forward on the design this is the part we want done so. Um what I'm recommending that you try to do to look to see how much it would cost us to do is number one to put that playground equipment in. And I know exactly what needs to be done to put that in um and then uh some of the pathways that lead to it. And to create a small parking area on um Clap Avenue which is existing but we would be dressing up paving it. So and so forth so we provide access handicapped access into the playground. Um I'm I've been collecting bids on fencing which I'm also gonna explore I'm not sure that we um have to do a full fence. Or or if we can do a partial fence the concern is number one if it is an inclusive playground that there could be a flight risk. For some kids using that playground the backside of that playground is gonna have a drop off no matter how much they grade it it's still gonna have a drop off.
So I'm sorry can you make yourself available to maybe meet with one two or possibly three of us to?
I've I've offered numerous times let me know when you want me to meet and I I'd be happy to sit down and meet with you.
There's just some things that I thought were certain ways that are turning out to be other certain ways I just would like to get some more information I don't want to talk.
I will I will be honest with you we did not know until what end of July July twenty-nine I think it was and we got the call from the county.
Things have changed so that means.
Things have changed in terms of what what could be covered by the grant there has had been up until that point no indication whatsoever.
So with that being said and things have been changed if I I know me personally I don't know if anybody else is interested in sitting down and talking with you but I would like to. You know I know Cory's uh leaving but if I could sit down if you can make some time and I'm usually we'll we'll I'll call you and we'll get together and set up a date.
So with. The thought process being that. The engineer firm is looking for. A direct to move on this. Why don't we just ask them to do?
To do work that's within the scope of what they've already have a contract with us for they haven't charged off.
Correct.
Cause I I.
It's gonna cost ten thousand dollars?
No, no, the design of the the design of the playground like how it was laid out and the park was laid out. Is is already done so I mean for me to say to her this is the parts I want done I don't think it you know then she can give me an idea of uh.
So can we just use that information to go out to bid with or do we have?
I I don't know but no because the bid package would need to be created in terms with with more specification to it than what we actually have. Design is one thing I mean to lay it out you know we're talking about you know how far down does it have to go? What you know what types of materials have to be brought in how much it has to be compacted all of that stuff would have to be put into a bid package to put out to. The the key is that that because of where the grant money is coming from it's coming from the federal government. Um that they require that it be bid out so that minorities and women owned businesses have an opportunity to bid on projects like this. And that was a requirement that we were not aware that we would have to follow because in twenty sixteen I believe it was New York State passed a. Piggyback law which allowed you to which allows you on certain contracts to go and just piggyback off somebody else's bid which is what we did. That's why we would come pan because they put a a very similar playground to what we were doing into their Freedom Park out in La Grange. And that was what we we did we had no idea and again um I wish they had said something to us what two years. Two years ago when we because they've known all along that this is what we did so. But it wasn't until they came down to trying to uh put together the contract.
Right.
Contract for the grant. Yeah, I I'll meet with if you want I can meet with all of you three of you whatever. I'd be happy to sit down and we can go through it step by step and I can show you where you are so but I can tell Nancy I would. I mean she's looking for a scope I think she's just looking for us to say you know do you want to include the the parking in this one or do you just want to do this? I mean it's kind of a necessity.
Okay, so. We get a little consensus here Mike you have any objection?
No.
And Kevin?
I'd like to meet with them. And Jen? I'll meet.
Okay, so there you have it.
Thank you.
Going into exec?
Yes, motion to go if anybody else have anything? I don't see anybody. Who might wanna speak. A motion to go to executive session.
I'll move.
Second, okay, so you have three who make the motion one who seconds.
Trusty Uwe, trusty Nesnick. You gotta you gotta say now who's gonna be authorized to go into executive session per your rules.
Well, tonight we have the two attorneys board members and the clerk clerk is uh. Has to be somewhere in about twenty minutes.
Attorney Wise and Attorney Wallace.
I have to leave at six forty-five.